Good morning. Welcome to our Minnehaha County Commission meeting for April 1st. It is April 1st, it's no joke. I'm going to call our meeting to order and ask that you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a reminder, check your cellphone, make sure it's on silent mode, and move on to a motion to approve our agenda.
So moved.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to our consent agenda, I believe Commissioner Benninga is going to recuse himself from our consent agenda. All right, consent agenda has bills that we pay, personnel actions, assessment freezes, various other things that all our public records and available in the auditor's office if anybody would ever like to review them. Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment on any item on our consent agenda? All right, commission, any comments? Anything you want to pull from the consent agenda? Commissioner Weinberg?
If I could just make a comment regarding the bills on the consent agenda, we're paying over a million dollars in bills this week. We paid bills last week, so those are the new bills in the last week that we're taking care of. And of those over a million dollars, more than half of those bills are for things that we are statutorily obligated to pay for. Things like attorney fees, mental health costs, decedent transport, jail costs, and the list goes on. So this week, if we approve the signing of the bills, we're paying over fifteen thousand in attorney fees and over ten thousand for burials. And then over four hundred thousand dollars from the bills today are going towards correctional medical services. So those are all things that we are statutorily obligated to pay for, and we take that responsibility seriously, but it adds quite a bit to our bills.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Weinberg. Commissioner Barth would be proud of you, I'm sure.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All righty.
Second.
Motion in a second. Call the roll.
Weinberg?
Aye.
Kiple?
Aye.
Heise?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to our regular business, first item is a public hearing to consider budget carryover and other budget supplements. Susan Beaman, good morning, Susan.
Good morning, Susan Beaman with the Auditor's Office. Today we are here to consider carryover supplements as well as budget supplements for the 2025 budget. The total amount of what we are requesting to supplement the general fund is one million four hundred and four thousand five hundred and fifty-three dollars and nineteen cents. And various special revenue funds is forty-four million two hundred and nine dollars, excuse me, two hundred and nine thousand three hundred and forty-three dollars and seventy-six cents. The primary, three primary categories that these fall into are related to contracts or planned projects that were planned for 2024, invoices that we just hadn't received in 2024, or that the work was not completed till 2025, additionally unspent grant funds and donation balances that needed to be carried forward. Additionally, we did have a few requests for departments where new expenses were needed in 2025 that were not part of the original planned budget. And additionally, as part of the carryover requests for that special revenue funds, I just wanted to identify that a large part of that is the Juvenile Justice Center contract that obviously we're continuing to work on, as those dollars will be spent in '25 and '26. I can certainly go through all of the memos in detail. You have the detail of all of these requests here. The resolution includes totals by fund within and by department. And additionally, within the memos in the packet, there are individual itemized expenses as well as memos from each of the department heads. So I would look to you to see if you have questions for me on any of the items. I'm happy to go through them in great detail if you'd like.
All right. Commission, before we go to public comment, anybody want her to go over any particular Okay, I'm seeing heads shaking, so we can skip the detail. We've seen most of these things numerous times, so...
Yeah, and there are, like I said, memos within here explaining them, and we do have a handful of department heads here as well if you have questions for them.
Any public comment on this agenda item? I guess we go proponents to the carryover because it is a hearing, so any opponents to the carryovers? This is money that we obligated in '23 for '24 that didn't get spent that we're carrying into '25, I think is the best way to say it, right?
Yep, there are items in budgeted as part of '24 in many cases that we're carrying into '25.
Yep, all righty. All right, I'll turn it to the commission for action.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Weinberg?
Aye.
Kiple?
Aye.
Benninga?
Aye.
Heise?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye. Motion carries. All right, special day, consider a motion to appoint Jacob Maris as Minnehaha County Highway Superintendent for the Highway Department effective immediately. Morning, Carrie.
Good morning, Carrie Deaver from Human Resources. It's my distinct pleasure to bring this action or this consideration of a motion to you to appoint Jacob Maris as the new Highway Superintendent. As you know, Jacob's been with the county for over seven years, has been our Assistant Highway Superintendent for three, and has been serving as interim for the past several months.
Jacob, we'd like to hear from you.
Morning, Commission, Jacob Maris, Highway Department. Thanks for the opportunity to serve the county in this role. I look forward to maintaining our roads and bridges to the best that we can and keep them in safe condition for the traveling public. Thank you.
Professional engineer, where'd you go to school, Jacob?
Sure, yeah. Went to school at South Dakota State up in Brookings, graduated in the spring of 2012, worked for the city of Sioux Falls for five and a half years, passed my PE, and then came to work for the county in December of '17.
Congratulations.
Yep.
All right, public comment on this promotion? All right, turn it to the commission for action. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Benninga?
Aye.
Weinberg?
Aye.
Heise?
Aye.
Kiple?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye. Motion carries. Congratulations. Moving on, Lutheran Social Services Multicultural Center presentation. Rebecca, good morning.
Good morning. I'm Rebecca Kieso Knutson, President and CEO of Lutheran Social Services of South Dakota, also a resident of Minnehaha County. I have Valeria Wicker with me, who is the leadership of our multicultural center, in case there's a question that goes beyond my pay grade, Valeria's here to answer it. We were asked to come and just provide an update on the work that we're doing at the multicultural center. I will say, just starting off, the MCC is a little bit of a different animal than other programs that we operate in the state, in that it is a true partnership between the city and the county and LSS. And we are so grateful of the partnership with the county in the work that we're doing with the multicultural center, but it's a little bit different. So want to just share, so we acquired the program in 2022. MCC had been operating for over twenty-five years at the point that we acquired the program. They had been operating independently as a very small nonprofit organization, and were looking for help because they were having a hard time finding an executive director for the program. It made sense. The mission vision of LSS and the multicultural center are aligned, and so we said, yes, we'll take this on. And so I'll talk about priorities that we've had, just really briefly. Of course, community outreach and partnership with ethnic organizations in the community has been a top priority for us as we've implemented this programming, helping people feel welcomed, helping connect people to resources that are in the community to help them be successful. We've been doing a lot of work around youth outreach. So we had an arts camp last summer at the Coliseum that invited young people to come and produce video content. We did swimming lessons outreach. We've been engaged with other community organizations around soccer outreach. Soccer, as you know, can be a great way to connect with young people, make them feel welcomed, so we offer that at the Coliseum. We also do the Festival of Cultures, which many of you have probably participated in during the past. We continue to do that. We are partnering with a Levitt organization to do that now, so it happens with the Levitt, on Levitt grounds, bring in mutes, music, arts, and an opportunity for people to engage in different cultures as a part of that event. We're working on improving the quality of interpreter services in our community. Interpreter services are really important, and having highly trained interpreters is also really important. So we've been offering training and have trained twenty-two interpreters in the last year. We're working on driver's education, we're working on education of parents using an evidence-based model called Strengthening Families, and offering that in a language that's appropriate for the community that we're working with. We also continue our outreach on workforce development and connecting people with jobs in the community. And then, most relevant to the county, is the Coliseum. So we continue to maintain and manage the Coliseum. We have shifted since we took on the MCC to move away from private events and focus solely on events that are culturally appropriate and educational and open to the community. So that has been our focus. To give you a sense of, so sometimes what I hear from the community is that during the day, they don't see a lot of things happening at the Coliseum. I can tell you the reason that is, is because there's not great parking around the Coliseum that allows for a long day event and not have people have problems getting tickets, which I can personally attest to receiving tickets, because it's two-hour parking in all the spaces that are around the Coliseum. But we do a whole lot of programming that happens in the evening and on the weekends. So to give you a sense of how that has played out, we have kind of a difference between what I would consider like big events, where we're doing, you know, an evening event on the weekend or a multi-day event on the weekend, and then ongoing events that we're doing in partnership with the community. So on average, we've had about fifty-two scheduled events monthly, and that is, leaves the Coliseum vacant for like one and a half days a year. So if you consider that combination of those big events, those signature events on the weekends, and then like soccer programming that happens every evening during the winter months. We have also partnered with Church on the Street, which is an organization that provides support to individuals in our community who are unhoused, and they offer outreach three days a week and offer support, like think basic necessity kinds of things are what happen when they come, and then they also do their services six times a year during the winter months. Big events that you might think about, we do two events that are Diwali events. We have partnered with Burundian drumming group, and they are coming and drumming regularly at the Coliseum. We do some small-scale conferences, so there is the Rwandan community that is here in Sioux Falls, and they're doing a conference that will be coming up. And then there are a splattering of other sort of educational opportunities that happen as a part of our work at the multicultural center. With that, I would open to questions if anyone has them.
All right, did you want to talk about any of specific events at the multicultural center? I appreciate Rebecca telling us about the usage. You know, how many people will come to your events, that type of thing?
Sure, well, one of the...
And your name again, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. It's Valeria Wicker. I'm the program supervisor at the multicultural...
Thank you.
And so with the soccer groups, last year, they practiced for over two-hundred-and-twenty hours at the Coliseum. One of the groups, their administrative hub, like if families want to enroll, they meet them at the Coliseum as well. And then with the Burundian group, they just got started last year, and they practiced for thirty-eight hours in the Coliseum in the past year. Their drums are quite big, so they're able to store them there as well. They're carved out of one piece of tree trunk, each of them, so there's other groups like this across the United States and are very beloved in the community because they're visual spectacular performance to see. So we're excited to have them at the Festival of Cultures as well.
I'm going to take public comment on this presentation before I turn it to the commission for questions, comments. Anybody like to address the commission regarding the Lutheran Social Services and the MCC and their use of county facilities, et cetera? All right, commission, questions?
Mr. Chair, I have one question.
Please.
I think you had mentioned during the presentation that you've ceased allowing outside organizations to use the space. Is that correct, or can an outside organization reserve the space for some purpose or other? How does that function?
What we have stopped is the private rental. So for a good amount of time before LSS took over the space, we were, or MCC at the time, was doing weddings, baptisms, those kinds of personal events. We continue to do what we consider rentals for organizations that are engaged in cultural and educational activities that are open to the public.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Please.
Along those lines, an example of an event that I attended there was the book talk from a local author that was the book for the Sulland Book Club. So it was a great opportunity to be there and to see the inuse. I think it was a Saturday, so parking wasn't really an issue.
Not an issue on the weekends.
No, and I heard that the event, they expect so many more people. Unfortunately, I don't think we're going to be there this year when we, in April, the Sulland Libraries is having another local author come, and they're expecting so many people, we won't fit. So it's a good problem, but the multicultural center worked really well for that. And then I just also wanted to mention that LSS has been a great partner with us, always excellent to work with, so thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kiple?
Definitely appreciate the partnerships and what you're doing to make use of the space. Just a couple macro-level questions. Can you describe a little bit, I think the city of Sioux Falls continues to evolve and grow, and maybe specifically what I'm talking about is different language barriers, the different services we've tried to provide in the government sector, whether it's friends, I think, that are presenting next from law enforcement, or human services, social services, just trying to get people to the right place. And if you can't speak the same language, it's a barrier. Can you just describe the community of Sioux Falls and Minnehaha County and how many different languages we're speaking, how you facilitate, I mean, what are the most common ones, maybe? But I think I've heard stats from Sioux Falls School District that were, you know, between specific dialects and whatnot, we're in, you know, well into the dozens of different languages. But maybe just describe how you facilitate some of those interpretive services and services for new immigrants to the country?
This kind of intersects with our work at the Center for New Americans, so I can't like separate the two of them. Obviously, we do interpreter services through the multicultural center. What we hear from the schools is there are over eighty languages that are spoken in the Sioux Falls School District, and we are working to build our roster of interpreters that can help facilitate that conversation. I see Laura Smith Hill, who is our Director of Education at the Center of New Americans. We provide very robust education services for individuals who are desiring to acquire the English language. So six days a week, we're offering classes there, morning, afternoon, and evenings, really trying to provide individuals with an opportunity to learn the language that will help them with integration. But we know that that doesn't, learning, if any of you have tried to learn the English or a different language when you're older, it takes a bit of time to do that, and so we have to provide that ongoing education for folks so that they can continue to advance. But we're also focused on the interpretation aspect of this because it takes a little bit of time. So we provide interpreters, as an example, driver's education. So we have a great transportation system in Sioux Falls, but it doesn't hit all hours of the day, and it doesn't reach all parts of the community. So to be truly self-sufficient, you have to have that ability to drive, and that training and testing process for people can be a challenge if you don't speak English as your primary language. So we provide interpretation services for individuals who are going to the DMV and who are attempting to pass that test so they can move on, so that they can drive, get their driver's license, and be successful. So we're paying attention. Yes, there's a great, robust, diverse community in Sioux Falls, and we're trying to do the best that we can to meet the needs of that community and also help that community integrate successfully into Sioux Falls.
Appreciate it, and I guess soccer is the universal language, right? So that's appreciated.
Our two soccer groups that are meeting are pretty cool.
Yeah, thank you.
Prior to Lutheran Social Services kind of partnering with the MCC or taking them under their umbrella, I guess, the MCC had its own governing board, and we had a governmental board between the county and the city, and the city helps fund a lot of what happens over there with the multicultural center in partnership with the county, our facility, and that type of thing. So I am also grateful to LSS for what you guys stepping up and really taking ownership. It just goes to show that a private entity can run things a little bit better than government, maybe a lot better, but thank you for what you do.
I appreciate that.
You bet.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, it says a brief presentation from the county sheriff's office, so I want to see this.
Mike Nelson, your sheriff of coming up on twenty-eight years. It's interesting that it's a brief presentation. I remember shortly after I became sheriff, the then state's attorney, Dave Nelson, did a word search on state statute related to "the sheriff shall," those words. I got pages of returns from the state statute that there's tremendous, a lot of responsibilities that the sheriff's office has. Sometimes I've said that I thought the statutes were written by police chiefs, but I've been fortunate to be here for, as I said, twenty-eight years, so I've built a strong team. My leadership team is here today with the exception of Warden Madsen, and so there will be two of them presenting to you, give you some basic information about different divisions in our sheriff's office. Both Adam Ziska, my patrol commander, will present, and then Chief Deputy Jeff Gromer, who you're very familiar with as well, will present as well, talk a little bit about our jail operations. Just to touch on that, our jail, you know, we're, today I looked at the numbers of Minnehaha County inmates, and it almost mirrors exactly what the numbers were one year ago today. And so our local numbers are not seeing the increase. While our jail numbers are a little bit higher, it's because we're housing more people for Lincoln County, the US Marshals, and ICE or Immigration's Custom Enforcement. Those numbers are up some, but our Minnehaha County numbers are staying pretty close to even, which is important as we look down the road to when we eventually open up two more floors of the jail and another hundred-and-fifty or so beds, knowing that that takes a hiring of additional staff. It was projected we'd be going into that space much earlier than even today, and we haven't had to do that. And I think in part, it's because of the programs that we've got in place in our community. Keep in mind that we piloted twenty years ago, the 24/7 program that was developed by then Attorney General Larry Long, and we've been part of that today. And between our 24/7 program and our pre-trial services program, today we're monitoring more people outside of custody than we have in the county jail, and that's a good thing. And we're able to do that without risking public safety. These are individuals that may maybe have drug or alcohol addiction, could be people waiting for their trial that need some monitoring, but we're allowed to safely keep them and monitor them in the community that can continue to work, support their family, support the community, pay their taxes, and so it's a good thing, and we monitor that on a regular basis. When we built the jail, and then the jail addition throughout my career, it came with the support of the public, but also with the support of this county commission and the commissions before you. And, you know, South Dakota does not have jail standards, so when we constructed our jail, the planning started in 1998, and ultimately, the construction we opened in about 2003, was built to national standards instead of state standards because there isn't any. And so we used the American Corrections Association, or ACA, standards when we developed, how big should the cells be, how many are two-bunk cells, how many are single occupancy, how many dorm beds do we have, things like that. So we were able to go from an old, poorly-designed facility into a new, modern facility, and we were able to do that a second time when we did our jail addition, replaced our intake, replaced our medical areas. First project was about twenty million dollars, the second project was about forty million dollars. But over those, it took the support of the public, took the support of the commission, and some really hard work on the part of our staff to develop facilities that are very, a new design facility is very modern, very efficient, very safe for the staff, safe for the inmates that we house, and safe for the public. And it's interesting that today, as I talk to you, it's the day before we start the Governor's Prison Reset Group, which I'm part of. I'm the sheriff that is represented on that group, and it'll be interesting to see, having gone through two major projects, moving from an old, poorly-designed facility into modern, efficient design, and heavily utilizing technology, to see how that matches up at all with what we start working on with the Prison Reset Group. So I'm very open to that conversation that starts tomorrow, but it will be an interesting process, I think, that the Governor has put forward, and I'm, both myself and State's Attorney Hager will be on that group. As I've talked about national standards and that there are really no state standards, we chose to, I believe that we provide the best healthcare of any facility in the state of South Dakota, likely in the Midwest. Because there aren't standards here, we went to national standards with the National Commission on Correctional Healthcare. We're an accredited medical operation in our jail, so we follow those NCC HC guidance and requirements to meet their certification, and then we get an audit from them. So let's go across the street, talk a little bit about our, the other side of the sheriff's office house, which would be our patrol division, our investigations division, our civil division. We serve roughly twenty thousand civil papers in a year. Those are judgments, executions, protection orders, mental health holds, they could be foreclosures, and a wide variety of other things we're involved in. Some of those things are high-risk, especially, an example would be a lockout where someone has refused to be evicted, and we physically have to go in and remove them, and they're becoming more and more common for us to do. I do want to say, though, that this commission and the history of the... Minnehaha County Commission has been to strongly support law enforcement. You provided us with the necessary equipment, the necessary training for our staff, uh, budget to be able to afford, you know, cars that were, are safe on the road, uh, and, and to attract and retain, uh, valuable staff members. The real key to our success as a sheriff's office has been the staff that we have and that we maintain today. Um, they're true professionals. They get up in the morning and, and know what their job is to do and they're dedicated to the public safety and serving the citizens. Uh, with that, uh, I'll be by for questions and so will the rest of my command staff. Uh, Adam Ziska, my patrol division commander oversees all of our uniformed divisions will come up and give you a brief presentation. Adam.
Thank you Sheriff. Good morning Commissioners, Mr. Sheriff. Um, Captain Adam Ziska with the Minnehaha County Sheriff's Office and I oversee the patrol division and a few of our, uh, contracts that we have in the sheriff's office. Uh, I believe that there are, is news from each of our divisions, so I'll just give you, um, some highlights of that news and it kind of follows along with the briefing memo that I had provided. So my goal is quality and professional law enforcement services over, over the county of Minnehaha County. Um, our current staffing levels, I'm happy to report are adequate for the needs of the county. Uh, we only have a few vacancies that we're hiring for now and we have a few deputies that are in our training program. Um, our biggest increase in costs that we are seeing overall are associated with equipment and vehicles. Uh, keeping pace with technology in, in this space is essential to keep our communities, our deputies safe. Uh, tech, technology and uncom, uh, upcoming technology and the development of, uh, AI type programs, uh, that are incorporated into everything from a voice recognition to our camera systems are going to help us be more efficient. And I believe that although there is a cost associated with that, I believe that it will help keep our staffing levels adequate for longer. It'll help us solve more cases and it will ultimately help keep our community members safer. Uh, from the patrol division, we have a policy review. Uh, our policy revisions and reviews are all done in-house. Mostly they occur throughout the year, but, uh, the sergeants did a, a large scale policy review, uh, modifying or changing many of our policies, uh, slightly, uh, in some cases and eliminating old policy in other cases. Uh, this policy review is in the final steps. It's with the State's Attorney's Office and we're waiting to, uh, make that available for our deputies. Uh, I've talked before about our community engagement committee. This is deputies that have volunteered their time in one way or another, uh, to help with existing events or events that we set up as a sheriff's office. This was established, uh, three years ago. I'm proud to announce that this year we did 64, uh, unique events, whether community-led that we attended or that we, we set up ourselves. And that's 10 more than the year before and about 10 more than the year before that. Uh, so we're excited to see that, that program continue to grow. Uh, this year we saw some new technology. We, uh, upgraded to Taser 10 as our old Tasers became obsolete. Um, they reached the end of their serviceable life. We did everything we could to, to prop them up as long as possible, uh, but that equipment was, uh, unserviceable. Uh, so now we're properly equipped once again to safely and effectively have a less lethal option that the, the deputies can count on. Uh, we have an Atena project with Motorola that you guys have heard a lot about with, uh, Captain Joe Bosman. That's a very extensive product, uh, project and it's expected to be completed this year. Once this project is online, it will immensely improve our first responder communications for not only the deputies in the field, but also our local fire EMS partners and local law enforcement. Uh, we continue our commitment to training. Uh, we offer 24 to 36 hours, whether you're part-time or full-time, uh, per year. This is almost double what the state standard is. Um, we, we exceed, we are proud to exceed state minimum, but we do put a high emphasis in, in quality in-house training. Uh, there are some costs associated with this training, uh, becoming a in, uh, a, a subject matter expert in a lot of cases and providing that in-house training, but we believe that it pays off because we don't have to send people to travel as often and we're able to continuously train on the same topics that, that are, that are useful for us. Uh, moving on to Southwestern Technical College, we have two full-time deputies. They're working as security officers. Um, you remember former, uh, Sioux Falls Police Department Officer Jim Larson. He was actually hired by the college as one of their compliance, uh, persons and that was because of the, the work he had done for us. He was able to transition that position. We're very proud to have him over in the, in the, uh, college, helping to strengthen our, our relationship with them. Um, our other position or that position was filled by, uh, a person who was over at the Sioux Falls National Air Guard as a deputy, uh, Wallace Winia, and he served that role in the past. He was a natural fit and I've heard good, good reports. So it's, he's helping to continue our relationship as well. We had a little change to the South Dakota Air National Guard. Uh, currently we're at 11 officers who are certified and two officers who are not. Uh, the budget for that on the military side, because that is a contract, was cut for about $300,000 from the previous year. So this caused us to have to reduce this division by two certified and, oh, I'm sorry, two non-certified and one certified officer. The reason it was only three employees, because I had two employees that were deployed with the military and so we don't incur any costs with that. And, uh, I was fortunate enough to have Wally, uh, Winia raise his hand and say, I'd like to work at the college at the same time. So this, this helped. Um, we're hoping for, to see an increase in, in the budget or that money put back in, um, but we're planning for possible future cuts, uh, in light of, of, of everything that we've seen, you know, going on. Uh, this is a direct, this program has a direct result in military readiness here in South Dakota and here in Sioux Falls. Our employees allow that whole base to train together because we work side beside their security forces every day. Um, without us being able to, to staff at certain levels, uh, they won't be able to do that. They'll have to split up their training, uh, base-wide. And so we believe that this is a, a very valuable service that we offer. You guys have gone through the Sioux Falls Airport. Uh, we currently still have a full-time deputy, the first full-time deputy that was hired two years ago. Uh, one thing I will note on that is it is increasingly, the rest of my staff there is part-time and it's getting increasingly and increasingly more difficult to hire part-time certified officers in the state of South Dakota. Uh, this is directly, uh, is a direct result to this type of job being very in demand locally. We're seeing an increase in, uh, companies coming to South Dakota, especially Sioux Falls and saying, hey, we want certified officers to work this detail or security here or private event here. Um, with that increase comes a drastic increase in wage that we're struggling to keep up with. And I do anticipate that wage, our starting wage for part-timers having to be revisited this year, uh, due to, due to my staffing, um, issues with part-timers and just not getting the, the applicants that we would want to represent the sheriff's office. I want to move on. These aren't my divisions, but I want to talk about, uh, Captain, uh, Josh Phillips Investigation Division. Uh, currently we have, uh, eight detectives and a detective sergeant. Two of those are assigned to the Drug Area Task Force. One is assigned to Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force, very difficult job. Uh, one detective is designated as a domestic violence detective and four others are assigned, the sergeant are, and the four others are assigned to just general property crimes and crimes against people, but they'll really take, take any call, uh, and take any case. In 2024, detectives were assigned a total of 1,161 cases and that's approximately the same number that we saw in 2023. Uh, but in 2024, they saw 236 hours as a group of call-out time, meaning they're off, they're, they're at home doing whatever they're doing off, off-duty time and they get called in for a large case or a case that patrol deputies need assistance with, with their knowledge and, and expertise. Uh, two of our detectives last year completed a polygraph school and now they're helping us with pre-employment and, uh, criminal polygraphs. Again, this investment in money and time for these two has paid off because we're able to utilize our in-house people, set up an outside service. And two of our detectives were awarded a commander's citation for intervening and potentially, uh, preventing, actually preventing a carjacking while they were conducting a follow-up on a different case. They had witnessed this and intervened and, and here in Sioux Falls and stopped that from happening. Uh, our task force is comprised of four deputy sheriffs and sergeant, and then we've had of all of 2024, a Sioux Falls police officer to help us with, with that task force. Um, this increases our manpower, our expertise and, uh, last year in 2024, a fugitive task force arrested 345 fugitives, all for felony offenses and these ranged from possession, uh, I'm sorry, burglary and possession of stolen vehicles to aggravated assaults to homicides. Uh, they're a very, uh, critical, very well-trained group that works behind the scenes to, in all honesty, because there's a lot of stuff that they do that we're not able to highlight on a, on a weekly and, and monthly basis. Um, but, but they are critical to, to keeping the citizens safe here by going after the most violent and the most hardened criminals that we have. The last division is the civil division. Uh, we had records, not, the sheriff alluded to this, but we had record numbers of court order evictions. Um, these court ordered evictions were 550 in 2024. Uh, these are commonly referred to as lockouts and this surpassed, surpassed our previous record in 2023, which was 530, uh, lockouts. Uh, in the civil space, uh, Senate Bill Five, as you all know, was passed in this last legislative session and it takes effect, uh, July 1st. This bill will allow us to collect funds for our agency's efforts by setting up processing, attempting to serve and completing sheriff's office return for any civil paper regardless of a successful or unsuccessful outcome. This bill, the sheriff's office sees as a great success for the county because it shifts the funding for their service attempts from the county taxpayers to private law firms requesting these services from us. Um, so we're a proud group, um, community-first approach. We have great training and we're willing to do the hard things. Uh, I've developed well, or we've developed well-rounded deputies and, uh, we intend to maintain our, our professionalism. And that is my brief presentation.
Thank you Captain. And we have one more.
Good morning. Jeff Gromer, Chief Deputy from the Sheriff's Office. Um, I'm filling in for Warden Mattson. He prepared a briefing memo that I'm sure you've all had access to. I'll just run through a few highlights on this. Um, I enjoy the opportunities to present to the commission on this, particularly in this aspect, because I get an opportunity to highlight the efforts of the jail staff and I do just want to point that out. The jail averages, um, you know, roughly 500 plus people a day and they are the most difficult group of people this community has to offer. Those 500, they are incredibly challenging people to deal with on a day and out, day in, day out basis. And honestly, the jail staff across the board does a phenomenal job of working with this incredibly difficult population. Um, jail staff primarily young, um, definitely behind the scenes and aren't really viewed a lot from the public aspect or public domain. They're in, work inside the jail obviously, but they do a really, really good job. Um, that extends on to the jail command staff as well as the assistance they get from, uh, particularly the human resources staff in trying to keep the jail, um, staffing levels appropriate with the recruiting and hiring of, uh, staff. The jail has always had a significant amount of turnover. Um, that's going to continue. The jail tends to be a entry-level position for people moving into their law enforcement careers. So that, that turnover is good turnover. We send a lot of people on to our patrol division, to the police department, to the highway patrol, to whatever facet of law enforcement they choose to go work into, which is great for us because we're getting qualified people that are advancing their careers. We very happy with that, but places a heavy burden on continuing to train and hire and replace those people. On that note, just a couple of highlights on that. Uh, in 2024, the jail had nine separate new hire classes, which brought in 43 new staff through the course of those nine classes. Um, 38 of those staff are still employed with us today, which is, um, great. That's a reduction in turnover from previous years. Um, so we're doing a very good job keeping, getting good quality people and keeping those that we can. Um, a couple of highlights from the jail, this will really kind of touch on some of the, um, difficulties with that population. Our, as the sheriff touched on a little bit, we've done a really good job of developing and implementing programs that help us keep people out on the streets. So people that we can safely monitor and work through the system on the streets are no, are, they're not coming to jail. Um, as we see from the jail numbers, the jail numbers though are holding very steady, which means that our, our population that's staying in jail is becoming increasingly difficult to deal with and the jail stats kind of bear that out. Um, over the course of the year, they've seen roughly a 3% increase in the number of documentable incidents in the jail. How that breaks down, just for idea on scope of work is, um, it's just under 30 documented incidents a day, 27. So the jail staff is dealing throughout the 24-hour day with roughly 27 incidents per day. And those incidents range from inmates not complying with staff, to fights between inmates, to fights against staff, to those types of things. So the documented incident, while at times can be fairly minor, they range from fairly minor to fairly significant. They're just incidents that require the staff to do reports and document. Um, 27, you're more than one an hour for those staff that are working on that floor. So they're, they're staying very busy. Um, fights between inmates, so inmate-on-inmate assaults, what the, we try to separate out assaults from mutual, mutual fights. So those assaults against inmates continue to increase. They went from 20, 122 in 2023 to 130 in 2024. So you're seeing that increase in difficult, the population's becoming increasingly difficult to deal with. Um, this is a stat we really don't like to see, but it's, it's worth noting, assaults on staff continue to increase. There was 16 in 2022, 21 in 2023, and that increased to 28 in 2024. Again, just bears evidence to that level of, um, problem population in the jail continuing to increase. Um, we do have an investigator that works directly out of the jail, refers cases to the State's Attorney's Office. In 2023, the State's Attorney, um, issued 154 new charges that originated in the jail or new cases that came to the jail. In 2024, that was, that number increased to 174. So while we're seeing these increases, they're not huge or dramatic increases, but it does just show the general increase in the activities of some of those regards in the jail. Uh, total number of bookings continues to increase. Again, it's increasing, not drastically, but it's this steady increase, which i- is expected with a growing community. In 2024, we booked in 15,594 people into the jail. Uh, 2023 was 15,150. So again, not a drastic increase, but they are continuing, those are continuing to increase. With that, you can see, um, on the average daily population, uh, that we do a monthly ADP graph that we watch pretty closely. It allows us to really pick up on trends over the course of a year. Uh, you can see over the course of 2024, our overall population has held really steady. The Minnehaha only population has held steady to a very slight decrease and that ebbs and flows a little bit throughout the year. Um, we've been able to, with that population, we've, obviously we've budgeted for and you have approved the hiring of staff to expand into our vacant space on what's called Unit Control Three. Um, I'm very comfortable telling you now that I think we'll be able to, I'm confident we'll be able to delay that hiring again for another full calendar year, um, which, uh, we've met with Susan through the Otter's Office. We'll be presenting that in far more detail in the 2026 budget, but I, I'm confident that the 25 hirings that were authorized will be able to delay, um, for another full calendar year as opposed to a six-month or a quarterly delay. And that's, that's, it goes along with all, how all of these programs and the jail operations kind of work hand in hand to ensure that we're not overstaffing or understaffing and we want to try to keep that jail, um, full to our point of efficiency with the amount of staff that we currently have. On that note, touch on our revenue just a little bit. Uh, the jail, again, we manage the jail population to our operational capacity, which is slightly below the num, the total number of beds. Um, when our Minnehaha County population falls below that operational capacity, we're fortunate that we have numerous partners throughout the, um, area and the region and the community that we partner with and they will, will use those, um, entities, inmates to, to fill our bed space up to that operational capacity. Um, it helps us offset some of our costs. It provides them a huge service of being able to have those inmates that they're required to detain in one specific location that's relatively close to where they're at. Um, on that note, without, with our inmate population not increasing how it was projected at the time of the expansion, we've been able to then increase the number of rental beds, which has proven to be beneficial. The, um, rental revenue for '24 was $5,385,000 and change, which is about 2 million more than we were able to project. What we will see in the coming years, um, we'll continue to monitor that closely because as inmate, Minnehaha County inmate numbers increase, however slightly, that number correspondingly decreases. Um, so we, we watch that very close. That's one of the reasons why we watch that population so close is so we can really control that number of rental beds. The US Marshal Service is, um, The U.S. Marshal Service is, um, works very well with us. They are typically the agency that we use to adjust our overall population. If mini-ha county numbers kind of start to trend upwards a little bit, Lincoln County numbers start to trend upwards a little bit, we would, then will trend the Marshal Service down a little bit, and they've been very receptive to that. They are appreciative to get whatever beds they can at whatever time we can offer them, but when we do tell them that we need some more space, they've been very willing to try to move some of their inmates out. Um, as far as the coming year of twenty twenty-six, uh, we're hoping to kind of maintain our status quo. We won't see a lot of, um, huge budget fluctuations that'll be presented in twenty twenty-six. We will be asking, uh, for a couple of new positions to staff the security at the JJC when that's completed in later, later twenty twenty-six, and then some increases in both the medical service end of things, a five percent general increase roughly, as well as the standard food service increase. Um, while I have the opportunity, I'd like to touch on the medical staff just a little bit at the jail. Uh, the medical need at the jail is historically high. That continues. We, again, with the population that comes in, into the jail, there's not a whole lot of preventative care that goes on prior to coming to jail. Um, and while I say prevent, preventative care, there's really not a lot of care at all that goes on, on the streets prior to coming to jail. So the jail medical staff really does a good job trying to get a lot of people who have either have some very serious chronic illnesses or have neglected very serious chronic illnesses, along with a very, very high level of substance abuse that comes into the jail. So that jail medical operation is very busy, very complicated, and there's a lot of, lot of demand on that. Um, but with that, we'll, that's about all I have for you. Um, I'm really happy with the space the jail's in right now. Our population's been good, and things seem to be operating, um, really well. So we're happy with that.
Any closing comments, Sheriff? No? Okay. Um, we will take public comment on this briefing. Anybody from the public like to address the commission on? Commission, any questions? Mr. Kipling?
Yeah, I just got a, a couple, couple of questions, maybe for Captain Tishka first. Um, one of the new developments in our partnership with state law enforcement is a renewed commitment for, for more help from Highway Patrol, and could you just describe what that consists of and how that will help your team's efforts?
Yeah, I think it'll be a great help. Uh, they are, from our observation, understaffed here. Uh, they haven't kept up with the growth, and so I think this initiative is, is a very smart for thinking thing for the troopers. Uh, a lot of times, they, they do mainly traffic on our state highways, on our interstate systems, but they do more than that. They serve as a backup for us, especially in rural policing and throughout the state, um, Sioux Falls area. We have Mitchell deputies that come into our area when needed. We have deputies from the north that come down when they're needed. So they're, they're great, they're of great use to us, and we are very used to working with them. Um, very close with, uh, people, the administrative people who run the division here, uh, and they're all looking for opportunities to help us when they can. What we see is sometimes the troopers in our area are literally not existing at all. They're not staffed certain hours of the night. Now, I, I can't point to a certain day or time and say this is when they're staffed, because they try to vary that, and they try to, uh, they try to eliminate that as much as possible, but the reality is, is with the staff that they have, it's, 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 it's very difficult to do. Um, but they do, they do a great job. Uh, major crashes in the county, it's only a, a certain, a force multiplier, as we would call it, to have them, their technology, their people and their expertise to help us with those. Uh, if they're on the interstate, obviously, we're going to help them. And then the traffic, uh, people, when they don't see the police presence or the trooper's presence on, on the corridor, um, they're going to take advantage of that, and we've seen that over the last few years, uh, with Veterans Parkway, uh, extending south and, uh, up into our interstate system. So I think it's a, a, a great, great opportunity for them and a great opportunity for us.
Commissioner Blainberg?
Thank you, Chair. Um, this could be a question for you, Captain Tishka. Um, the deputies that you have that are EMS trained, um, how is that process going? And are more, um, seeking that certification? And then just also with a comment that there's such a valuable resource to the rural residents, um, with your response times and the, the measures that they're able to provide? I was just curious.
Yeah. Yeah, so the EMT, EMS program is, is a great program. We get, we pay for this type of training for our deputies to be, because frequently they are the first responders, getting there ahead of, uh, rural medical services. Uh, so that's just the step above your regular first aid, which we train everybody in. Um, and some of these deputies are highly advanced in this. In fact, we have a former paramedic that is maintaining his credentials and helping us within the office as well, within our specialty divisions, but, uh, I think it's almost half or just maybe a little under half of our deputies are EMT-trained, uh, and we are always offering and looking for, uh, entry-level deputies all the way up to people that have been here for a while and seen what they can do and, and want to participate in that. So I'd say that program's going well. Uh, we try to utilize all the, all the spots available that we have for that, um, and that's what we worked toward. But it's a good group, it's a good group. The training for it has kind of been, uh, changed over the last year in a positive way to try to condense and consolidate some of that in a, in a positive way.
Then if I could follow up with a question?
Please.
About training. Um, it's been, I'm not sure, a couple of years since the local training center opened?
Yeah.
How's that going, and what impact has that had on, on your training or your budgets or?
Uh, not, not much for us. It's this, it's a city-owned facility. Uh, this, this city, uh, maintains control over it. However, they see an opportunity, there's so much good facility out there that they can't possibly utilize it all within, you know, a day, a week. They try to use as much of it as possible, running a regional academy out there, uh, at times, but, but there's, there's, there's enough space, uh, for mixed use. So, uh, what we've done is, or what we will do is enter into agreement with them, um, if we want to use their EVAC space, or we want to use their building space, or we want to use their, their range, we'll be able to, I guess for lack of a better word, rent those spaces, and that is something that the city is still, still actively working on and putting together. However, we have conducted some training with our specialty units out at that facility. I, as a administrator, end up out there quite a, quite a little bit, in fact, sometimes twice in a day. Uh, it's obviously where Metro's located, and so I, uh, I see a lot of benefit from that facility moving forward in our partnership with Sioux Falls.
Do your new hires, um, training classes happen there, or do they go out to peer?
So if there's one here, uh, that Sioux Falls, the city of Sioux Falls is conducting with their, uh, personnel, we try to get people into that one. We've been very successful there, and we've never been turned down, uh, but they're continuing to grow as well. Uh, we don't guarantee you can go to Sioux Falls for training, or we don't, we never say that to an applicant. We say you, you might go to peer, which is, which is the alternative and has always been the standard. So you can either go out to peer or the regional, depending on if Sioux Falls is running an academy. Currently, they're trying a goal for two per year to supplement the ongoing academy and peer. So they run in tandem, so they run regardless, because there's that much of a demand for, for law enforcement in the state.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
I'd just like to make a couple of comments. Um, as the link is on to the Sheriff's Department, I get there occasionally, um, and the chairperson for Metro Management. The thing that I'm amazed at is the professionalism of the staff, especially when they're in a, I'll call it an episode that is maybe not physically disruptive, but the verbal hassles that you guys and women need to deal with sometimes is, I'd say disgusting, to say the least. And I'm proud of the fact that the county and the Sheriff's Department and the Police Department and, and those kinds of things doesn't have a lot of, quote, negative feedback from lawsuits and those kinds of things, but even with the non-uniformed employees, there are times where I hear languages between, uh, individuals in your guys' department that I find totally unacceptable, but you guys handle it with such professionalism. I don't know how you do it, to be honest. Um, I know if I was in that position, I'd probably be in jail the next day, but, uh, the real prob, the real, uh, accolades to you and your staff and the well-being of how you've been trained and how you deal with that and how you maintain your professionalism is incredible. So thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Heisey, did you have something?
Uh, Mr. Chair? Um, yeah, I just wanted, I, since you got the spotlight, Mr. Tishka, but of course, anyone else could, uh, step up to the plate if they have a better answer. Um, but I want to first thank you for all the hard work that, you know, you do personally and the work of your department. Uh, you do an absolutely essential, uh, duty for the community, and, uh, I'd love to see all the public outreach and, um, the work that you do. Um, I did want to ask, um, I think we're all aware, there's been a large number of car break-ins, car robberies. There's, of course, uh, street racing that happens quite often in the city of Sioux Falls. Are we seeing those kind of activities in the rural areas or the smaller municipalities?
Uh, sometimes. It usually is a ebb and a flow. Uh, a group of people will come up to one of our contract cities occasionally, being any one of our contract cities, and they'll do a spree. So the deputy, unfortunate, comes in in the morning, he's now got, you know, fifteen car, car prowls or call, car hopping calls to take, to try to inventory, and, and, you know, we try to, the nice thing is with people with Ring cameras and other utilization of technology, we, we're, we're pretty successful in, in finding out who these people are on a regular basis, but I haven't seen any noticeable increase over the years. The city goes, you know, uh, has a skyrocketing increase. We're not seeing that out in the county, um, as much.
Okay. I might want to follow up question too, kind of a, a different kind of question. Um, I know we, uh, staff officers or deputies rather at Southeast Technical College, the airport and so on, do those entities, uh, subsidize or reimburse the county for that service or?
Yep. I don't know if this is the proper phrase, but we call them a pass-through because it doesn't affect the county's budget. A hundred percent of our services provided are paid for under contract and, including on all three cases, an administrative fee to help, uh, cushion the, or, to help maintain or, or make available the cost of my time, uh, Joe's time, and various members of, within the county staff that help with the budgeting processes and, and the contracts themselves, like the state's attorney's office and things like that. So, no, is, is the answer. We don't, we don't make a ton of revenue from these. That's not, that's not the point. Uh, we do establish these services and, and, and they don't, they don't affect the budget, the county budget.
Yep. Thank you.
Mr. Kipling?
One last item for me, uh, more of a comment, I guess, for Chief Deputy Gromer and, and Warden Mattson is just, uh, we mentioned that the f- five hundred, uh, most challenging people our community have to offer, uh, are in our jail, and that can be challenging, but I guess I would just encourage you to be recruiting some of the best people our community has to offer. So I just wanted to thank you for the, that, uh, that concept of, uh, a lower turnover rate, and obviously that means you're recruiting high-quality people that are a good fit for, uh, the program and the, the industry and, uh, form of public service that they're entering into. Um, and then I, I think I've, this might be my third year in a row that I get to say this. It's, it's kind of nice that, uh, that UC Three hasn't expanded yet, but I, I keep encouraging you, hopefully that, that theme is setting in, is that, but if you see good talent, uh, even though we don't have those fourteen positions posted yet, I, I, I think I'd speak for my colleagues that if, if you see good law enforcement talent, let's scoop them up and let's get them into our system. And so I think we've authorized you guys to do some over-hires, uh, in that, especially that correctional world, because it's just, it has inherently high turnover, and if you get, uh, good people, let's get them in the door, so.
Commission has authorized us over-hires, and we use them. Every opportunity we get, we use them.
Yep.
Um, yeah, and that, that reduction in turnover is really a testament to the supervisory, uh, command staff and the efforts from human resources to really help us continue to recruit the best people we can for that role and to get them into the door, get them trained, um, and try to keep them as long as we have.
Thank you. Sheriff, congratulations on the great team, great leadership. You've created a heck of a culture there, all the way down to your CEOs and deputies on the streets, so thank you for that and the professionalism that they demonstrate every day. So, thank you. All right. Consider a motion to authorize the jail to purchase a combi oven for the jail kitchen through Sourcewell Contract Number Zero Six Three Zero Two Two. We got Mike McGovern coming up already.
Mike McGovern, I'm a lieutenant at the jail. Uh, just as you said, Minnehaha County Jail is requesting the commission to consider a motion to authorize the jail to purchase a combi oven for the jail kitchen. The existing combi oven is no longer serviceable and can, cannot be repaired due to being an obsolete model. The purchase will be made through Sourcewell Contract for forty thousand, nineteen dollars and thirty-four cents. That's price includes installation. Uh, this purchase was included in the twenty-five budget and will be purchased with budgeted funds.
All right. Thank you, Lieutenant. Any public comment on this agenda item? Commission, turn it to you for questions or action. Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Consider a motion to authorize the Sheriff's Office to submit an application for the twenty twenty-six South Dakota Highway Safety Grant. Captain Bosman?
Good morning, Commissioners. Joe Bosman, Minnehaha County Sheriff's Office. This morning in front of you, I have a request for our annual Highway Safety Grant application. It's this time of year where the application period has opened. It is a federally funded grant opportunity that is passed down to the State Office of Highway Safety and then passed down to local entities to actually go out and do the duties of the program for the highway grant. What it does is it provides overtime cost reimbursement for our deputies to go out and focus on speeding, seatbelt enforcement, distracted driving, driving, um, and impaired driving enforcement duties. We supplement with, uh, sobriety checkpoints. We have, uh, speed enforcement areas. Maybe a school bus is reporting violations where people are running stop signs on school buses, so getting extra deputies out there to help monitor these problem areas can be covered with overtime costs through this grant. Uh, historically in the past, we roughly receive anywhere, uh, we had twenty-three thousand in twenty twenty-four, I should say federal fiscal year twenty twenty-four, and then in federal fiscal year twenty twenty-five, we received thirty-two thousand dollars, uh, for overtime costs, and, uh, there was some equipment and travel in the twenty-five, but in, in the twenty twenty-six fiscal year grant, what we're applying for here, it'd be overtime costs and then one travel for, um, an impaired driving conference.
All right. Public comment on this agenda item? All right. Commission, turn it to you for questions and action.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I do have a quick question, Captain.
Yes.
Do we usually get what we request? We're requesting twenty-seven. Is it pretty standard that we get what we request?
Historically, we've gotten what we requested. Um, I do know that last year it was, dial was turned down a little bit on, from what requested to what received, um, and then we received some notification that, that same reduction in funding may be carried over into twenty twenty-six as well, too. So they're trying to forecast what funding was becoming available, um, but we are very satisfied with the funding we do receive, and we're very gracious that it is available for us to use.
Excellent. Please call the roll.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Heisey?
Aye.
Kipling?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye. Motion carries. Consider a motion to authorize the chair to sign an agreement between JDC and NCIC for correctional communications. Morning, Jamie.
Good morning. Jamie Gravitt, General Detention Center. Uh, before you today is a, a, an agreement with NCIC. NCIC provides tablets for our youth to use in their, uh, housing units. It also provides a calling system that will be used in the new facility when it opens up. Uh, the reason this was brought before you is the jail uses the exact same system, but they have a different contract than what we do. Uh, we will not be receiving a, a commission in any way on this so that our users can have a lower rate that they'll have to pay. Uh, the agreement calls for eight cents per minute for phone calls and video chats. Uh, in addition, youth will be able to complete, uh, different courses on those tablets as well to earn points to use for movies and other activities on the tablets. Um, one nice thing about it is they'll be able to go into court and give completion certificates on things that they've done to improve themselves and show the court that they're really trying to do a better job. Um, I'd ask that you approve this agreement.
All right. Public comment on this agenda item? Commission, questions, action?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. I have a question, Jamie. So in the past, the county paid for all this. Now, it's going to be up to the family of the child to pay for it? What if they can't afford it? I mean, or?
We'll, we'll work to make some exceptions on that. Uh, usually we've used regular phone lines and incurred long-distance fees and stuff like that that we've just covered. We looked at trying to- We looked at trying to make this a free system for the families to improve, you know, with technology and so forth, but for us to provide it as a free service, it would have cost the county over $50,000 a year. So, we worked out a deal to where we could make it as cheap as possible for the families to maintain contact. We'll still offer face-to-face visits for people that want to arrive at our facility and do that, but up to this point, we've been incurring the cost.
Okay. All right. We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Kipley?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Bennega?
Aye.
Heisey?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Consider a motion to authorize the Chair to sign a funding agreement between Minnehaha County and Edison Township for Rural Access Infrastructure Funding. Good morning. Highway Superintendent Morris?
Good morning, Commission. Jacob Morris, Highway Superintendent. Last week, or two weeks ago, we saw a couple, a couple of these agreements with the Rural Access Infrastructure Funds. This will be presently the last year for Rural Access Funds. The bill that moved forward this year did not pass. So, once these projects are done and this money is used up, this project will be complete. The three agenda items I have in front of you today are for the last three agreements that were awarded but have not had executed contracts yet. The first one is for Edison Township. This road goes to Nordstrom's in Edison Township, which is on an asphalt road, and Nordstrom's is responsible for replacing the surfacing over top of these culverts as part of their agreement with Edison Township to maintain that road. The request would be to sign this agreement with Edison Township, which provides $40,000 to them to replace these culverts.
All right. Public comment? Commission? Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Bennega?
Aye.
Kipley?
Aye.
Heisey?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider a motion to authorize the Chair to sign a funding agreement between Minnehaha County and Grand Meadow Township for Rural Access Infrastructure Funding. Jacob.
Thank you, Commission. Jacob Morris. This is a similar type agreement where the county through the state covers 80% of the cost to replace this small structure, large culvert. It is currently posted, so it's inhibiting the use of the road for farmers that want to haul heavy loads over it, so it's imperative that Grand Meadow gets it replaced as soon as it can, so it's nice that we are able to help them out.
Commission, action.
Make a motion to approve?
I'll second. I do want to ask a quick question.
You bet.
Say, congratulations on the new position, Jacob. I did want to ask, though, with the bill not passing this year, what downstream effects do you think this will have for the county in terms of, you know, funding these rural township roads?
Sure. So, the townships each have their own taxing authority, and what this bill did was it encouraged townships to use that taxing authority. There's a minimum required 20% contribution towards this project, and you couldn't qualify it unless you had some sort of tax structure in place to get this grant. Generally, the townships run a very minimal crew, very minimal amount of maintenance to keep the taxes down. There is, there is more taxing authority out there in order to replace these structures. In the future, I think this bill will be looked again at and peer, but currently, there are just too many counties that have unspent funds for it to move forward.
Got you. Thank you.
All right. Call the roll.
Kipley?
Aye.
Heisey?
Aye.
Bennega?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. First reading and authorize auditor to publish notice of public hearing. Did I miss one? No. Backing up to 17 then. Consider a motion to authorize the Chair to sign a funding agreement between Minnehaha County and Split Rock Township for Rural Access Infrastructure Funding. Miss one?
Jacob Morris again. This is similar to Grand Meadows. This is a posted structure on a Split Rock Township road, and we're happy to help them try to get it replaced.
Public comment? Commission?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Call the roll.
Bennega?
Aye.
Heisey?
Aye.
Kipley?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on. First reading and authorize auditor to publish notice of public hearing to be held on April 22, 2025 for zoning text amendment number 2504 to amend the revised joint zoning ordinance from Minnehaha County and the city of Sioux Falls to add accessory dwelling unit ADU regulations. Morning, Kevin.
Good morning. I'm Kevin Hookman from the County Planning Department. During the last year or so, the County Planning Department has been working to update Comprehensive Plan. Several policy amendments were adopted into the Comprehensive Plan when the Envision 2045 Comprehensive Plan was adopted here, and one of those policy amendments was to incorporate accessory dwelling units into the zoning ordinance. The Planning Department first presented a full first draft of the planning, of the ordinance at the February Planning Commission meeting. After that, we worked a little bit more to refine that draft and presented the final draft to the public hearing on the March 24, 2025 Joint Planning Commission meeting. So, this is going to be for the joint jurisdictional area between Sioux Falls and the county. Both Planning Commissions unanimously voted to approve the proposed ordinance text amendment. And just a quick overview of what this will do. The ordinance will add accessory dwelling units to all zoning districts that allow single-family dwellings. It'll also add a new section for ADU regulations within the additional use regulation section of the ordinance. The regulations will regulate both general requirements for all ADUs in general, as well as requirements that are specific for attached accessory dwelling units and detached ADUs as well, as well as several definitions will be changed as part of this ordinance amendment. This is the first reading for the ordinance text amendment, so action should be taken to authorize the auditor to publish notice of the hearing of the ordinance text amendment. Staff is looking at April 22, 2025 for the hearing date. Is there any questions?
Public comment on setting the date of hearing? Commission, I need a motion to set the date of hearing for April 22.
That's my motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. First reading and authorize auditor to publish notice of public hearing to be held on April 22, 2025 for the zoning text amendment number 2505 to amend the revised joint zoning ordinance from Minnehaha County and the city of Sioux Falls to change the transfer of building eligibility regulations.
Yes, so this ordinance text amendment came about the same way with the Envision 2045 Comprehensive Plan adoption. This will remove the same ownership requirement for transferring building eligibility's within the joint jurisdictional area of Sioux Falls and the county. Again, there was a first draft that was presented at February, and then a public hearing was held at the Joint Planning Commission on March 24, where the amendment was unanimously voted to approve the amendment. Currently, the requirements for transferring building eligibility's require properties to be contiguous and under the same ownership, and throughout the years, there has been more properties that have worked around by selling property temporarily and then moving the eligibility and then buying it back, and this is one way to kind of allow an easier transfer process. It will still require a conditional use permit to transfer a building eligibility. So, again, this is the first reading, so, and authorize the publish of notice of hearing, and again, this will be at the April 22 meeting.
All right. Would anybody from the public like to comment on setting the date of hearing for April 22? Commission, look for a motion.
I'll make the motion to authorize the auditor to publish the notice of public hearing for April 22.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. All right. First reading and authorize auditor to publish notice of public hearing to be held on April 22, 2025 for zoning text amendment number 2506 to amend the 1990 revised zoning ordinance from Minnehaha County and to add accessory dwelling unit regulation.
Yes, so this ordinance text amendment would amend the ordinance for the county as a whole outside of any joint jurisdictional area. It is basically a mere ordinance of the ADU regulations that are being proposed in the joint jurisdiction with Sioux Falls. Again, this is, was presented at the March 24 Planning Commission meeting and unanimously voted for approval, and we are looking for the text amendment to be heard on April 22 at this hearing. Is there any questions?
Public comment on this hearing date? I have a question. I noticed one of the requirements is two additional off-street parking spaces. I mean, do those have to be paved, hard surface? What are, what are we talking and why?
That was a requirement from staff to make sure that there is adequate parking on the property. In the rural area, generally, parking is not much of an issue. If they have a garage attached to the house, they might have another garage attached to the ADU. We would also include parking spaces like right in front of the garage, as long as it's not on the street itself, so it shouldn't be a burden to most property owners.
Okay. Thank you. Look for a motion to set the date of hearing for April 22.
So moved.
Second. And I do have one quick question, if you will. Well, I first wanted to say, I think these are great updates to our ordinances. What kind of feedback have you been receiving in the last couple of months? Now, this is coming before the public again.
Sure. So, during the planning, the review of the Comprehensive Plan, we received quite a bit of feedback, and it was a little mixed, but generally favorable, feedback towards ADUs. Since that initial kind of Comprehensive Plan update, we have been receiving lots of calls inquiring about where is it in the process, because I think there are a lot of people that are ready to go as soon as the ordinance is adopted to put their ADU up in the backyard.
Absolutely. And what's the nature of the concerns that people have? Are rural residents apprehensive about the influx of new people moving in, or what's sort of the nature of it?
Sure. Yeah, the nature would be, traffic was one of the main concerns. If there's already a subdivision on a rural gravel road, adding more traffic can be a concern. The other thing would be, yes, to some degree, more people in general. Whenever you have more people, you have bring along more potential for conflict, I guess. The other thing that was brought up was some concern about the value of the existing building eligibility's, that why would somebody buy my eligibility when they can put up a house in their backyard? To that concern, I guess they could still buy that eligibility now they could put a house and an ADU, so perhaps it would cancel out between the values of building eligibility's versus what they are now.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We have four ayes, one absent. All right. Moving on. First reading and authorize auditor to publish notice of public hearing to be held on April 22, 2025 for zoning text amendment number 2507 to amend the 1990 revised zoning ordinance from Minnehaha County to change the transfer of building eligibility regulations. Last one, Kevin.
Yes, so this is the last amendment for today. This is also, again, the county version of the transfer of eligibility requirements amendment to remove the same ownership requirement for transferring building eligibility's. Again, this is at the March 24 Planning Commission meeting, where it was unanimously recommended for approval, and we are looking for the April 22 meeting. Is there any questions?
Public comment on setting this date of hearing for April 22? Commission, look for a motion to set the date of hearing for April 22.
I'll make a motion to authorize the auditor to publish notice of public hearing to be held on April 22. Second.
Motion by Heisey, second by Blainberg. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. We are now at the opportunity for public comment. We give 30 minutes for public comment, five minutes for any one individual, anybody that would like to speak. We ask that you please give us your name and your county of residence. All righty. Commissioner Liaison reports.
Commissioner Kipley? Chair, I can start. Been corresponding with Jason Gierman in Emergency Management and the Fire Chiefs Association, and we did get a half-inch rain this weekend, and we're, we were basically just waiting on to see if we'd get any real precipitation today, and it looks like we are as we speak. So, I would just advise my colleagues, I'd anticipate consulting with those entities one more time, and we would probably lift the burn ban tomorrow. So, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I'm just looking at my calendar. Last Wednesday, I attended the Chamber Board of Directors meeting. I guess not a lot of real interesting updates from there, but just so you know, I was there for an hour and a half, so. Yeah, that's it. All right. Non-action, Commission discussion. Commissioner Blainberg?
Just wanted to add, we hosted the county, city, school district meeting last Wednesday and had a great discussion, great dialogue with all the participants, and just wanted to make sure we said a special thank you to Representative Jamison and Senator Larson for coming out and contributing. And then also, I had the opportunity to meet with the Glory House. They're one of my new liaison assignments this year, and it's an ongoing conversation. We're going to continue, but it was really great to get together with them and hear about the service that they're providing for our residents, and going forward, I think we're going to talk a little bit about some of the struggles that they face, so.
We're the organization. You bet. All right.
Follow up and give you a short update here. Tracy Smith with the Public Defender's Office is looking at incorporating some software to improve the efficiency of her office and looking to see where that goes. I was also able to make the open house at the museum down the street and was able to talk to several other staff, and it was a really great time, so.
All righty. Non-action, Commission discussion. All right. We will have an executive session, so I'd ask for a motion to enter into executive session for the purposes of South Dakota Godified Law 125, 2, 1, 3, and 4.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. All righty. Didn't mean to scare you.